Okay, we are here with Mark Frank. He is running for Conroe City Council, place four. It's April 4th, 2018. And with me are Pat Tibbs, Dennis Tibbs, Bob Bagley, and Larry Rogers. And so as we discussed, Mark, if you want to take up five minutes, you're welcome to on your opening.
My name is Mark Frank. I originally got involved with Conroe City Council because the people continued to reach out for their plight that they were having with the city. Primarily, their property rights were being violated with the city ordinances. Most of them didn't have the money to reach out to attorneys. And I worked for the courthouse long enough, I figured out how to use Google and a couple other legal websites to be able to pull up case laws that would be relevant. I started doing that, and the more I did it, the more I saw how useless it really became. We only had one man sitting on the council that cared enough to listen. Despite me arguing with him and the people arguing with him, they continued just to encroach on our property rights and slowly but surely strip it away. Eventually, it came to the point where I said enough is enough. If I can't do anything as a citizen, then I'll do it sitting up there. If they can't do their jobs, I'll be happy to do it. In turn, I made a promise to the people. Not only am I going to do the job, I'm going to do the job for free. Every check that comes to me, I will sign back over and give it to various organizations throughout our city. That includes the fire department, police department, even local places such as our Montgomery County Youth Services. They need the money, they're able to use it within our community. I feel that it's a better cause than me keeping it. At the end of the day, it's supposed to be about service back to the community. It's supposed to be a public service job. And unfortunately, granted, it's not a whole lot of money, but they've decided to play ego power trip with it. And I'm not going to tolerate that in my city. I grew up in Conroe, I was born here. I was raised here for a good part of my life. We, my family, left to get a better education and quality one out of spring, which was, I can definitely say, a lot better than what we were offering at that point. I spent eight years traveling all over, primarily lived in Louisiana the whole time. Decided to move back with my family, back to Conroe, because this is where I was born, where I was raised, where my heart was. Once again, came back to see the plight, came back to see the ugly. Not much has ever really changed, as far as I'm concerned, from when I was a child to now I was a grown adult. So I'm going to give back to the community the best way I can. I'm going to give them back their voice and their choice. And I firmly believe that it's time to do it. It's time to do it now. We see the same setup and the same corruption going through Montgomery County. I believe this is a stepping stone. If we can fix it in the city, we can fix it in the county. City's nothing more than a small county. At the end of the day, if it implements and it works appropriately for us, it should be able to be implemented and work appropriately for all of Montgomery County. Also, at the same time, I've got degrees, so I'm not just some dumb bunny hopping in off the street, asking for a handout. I've got a bachelor's in businesses, bachelor's in business of science that I'll be finishing here in June. I've also got an accounting degree, I've got a finance degree, and associates as well in business.
All right, thanks. On the questionnaire, the first question, what are the three most pressing issues in Conroe, City of Conroe? And you touched a little bit on some of it. You mentioned tax reform. I kind of like your plan there. Infrastructure and water. Let me address infrastructure first. What's your, explain your economic development plan that you mentioned as part of the infrastructure.
Well, I grew up in spring for a good portion of my life, and I saw them grow and expand. If you've ever been down 1960, it's a madhouse, always has been and will always continue to be. They tried to plan and develop for a five-year plan, such as our city currently has done. Well, the issue with the five-year plan is, three years into it, if you're the fastest-growing city, you're going to run out of time quicker than not. At two years, you've hit a wall. So why, when I tell people, when we want to build a road, they say, well, let's take it from here to here. We're going to run it as a three-lane when it's only a two-lane. Well, the issue with that is, we need a four-lane, and we don't need to bottleneck it at the end. All you've done is moved people one mile down the road, a couple minutes quicker, just to stick them in the same traffic all over again. We see it now with 45. We still see it even with 1960, with them ripping out everything down the sides, pushing buildings all the way back. What used to be buildings on the side of the road that were landlocked have now been opened up through the development plan that they've issued. But once again, the downside is, they did not plan to do all of 1960. They stopped halfway through. It's the same issue, the same traffic, nothing's ever changed. Does that sound like a good plan for your money? I don't spend money just to spend it, I spend it because it's what's needed. At the end of the day, they need a better plan, they need to prepare to be landlocked because the city already is, and we need to make sure that we keep in mind, we need to build a true 20-year plan, not a five-year plan.
All right. Thanks both.
You know, one of the biggest problems in the state, and maybe in the nation, is civil asset forfeiture. So what's the, what's the City of Conroe's involvement in taking property like that? The sheriff's department, the attorneys take it? What control does the city council have over that, and how much of it is there going on?
Well, you know, the city has some control over it, but it's not a whole lot. Just like we see even in Montgomery County, the sheriff's department handles their portion, depending on what happens, you know, drug, alcohol abuse, things like that. They take the items, they bring it back into the withholding, so to speak. Now, it becomes another expense, especially with the city sitting on it. They've recouped a lot of land, in turn, through economic development. They built new houses, in turn, they've taken the old properties, now they're sitting on them. So they're going to enforce ordinances such as, your grass is more than a foot tall, you have to mow it. But yet, the city has ones that are three, four-foot high that they refuse to maintain. It becomes an eyesore for the citizens, the citizens then have to deal with the property. The city continues to grow, and I understand it needs these lands in many cases. In some cases, we can use these vehicles, once again, for certain departments, not always maybe the sheriff's department. I don't know if you've ever seen a police car take off, but it's like they're in the Indy 500. They give it all the gas it can, and some of these cars that they're taking, obviously, a drug dealer's not driving around in a brand-new Lexus. He's going to be driving around in a little beater car that may be costing two grand. So if he has loss, it's minimal. He's still a business owner, in retrospect, when you consider it. The city is going to continue, once again, to do this. The city right now owns a lot of equipment that's old and outdated. They need to be getting rid of these items instead of holding on to them. We have options, and we can run most of this through. We've got a lot of land, small quarter-acre plots that can be gotten rid of, and in turn, that will put money back into the city without having to tax the people to gain those same revenues.
And that's, that's land that the city has, has taken from the owners?
Some of it's land that's either been given away, it's been taken through different tax, through different tax means. And it just, it just sits and rots. It's no good for them to have a quarter-acre lot, it needs to be done something with. I've even offered to buy it, and they refuse to do it.
The City of Stafford takes in no property taxes, not from businesses, not for, not from, from residents. Do you feel that Conroe could do that? And would you be willing to, to initiate that program to make the changes in Conroe?
Well, I've been looking into that, because that was something that actually piqued my interest. It starts with a zero-based budget. We have to go through and identify the real waste. That does mean someone with an organizational development background, such as myself, needs to come in to be able to restructure the city, in the silos, convince HR it's time to cross-train. And that way, we can eliminate a lot of those positions to be able to take that kind of step. Right now, we're hemorrhaging a lot of money. In fact, last year, if you saw the numbers that we crunched with my audit team, we actually took in a negative of $12 million. Now, granted, a lot of that was set aside or pre-planned to be spent from the prior year, but nonetheless, it falls on the books as a loss. We can do it, I feel. But, once again, sales tax rates have to increase. I mean, if you give in one spot, you got to give somewhere else, because the money's just not free. I have heard a couple different theories on how to gain the revenues without taxing for property tax. One of it was the sales tax increase. I had some people run numbers. I'm not the biggest mathematician in this world, but I'm pretty good with it. I'm sitting somewhere around 13 cents sales tax, ought to be able to topple it for us.
Stafford did increase their sales taxes.
Where was their sales tax already?
I don't know. It's, what, 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 Stafford? It's the, it's the state max. They're maxed out.
Okay, I don't, I don't know what their max is in my planning. I have no clue.
Eight and a quarter. It's eight and a quarter, everybody.
Okay, so it's standard, then?
Yeah.
Two percent state and, or two cents state and?
Yeah.
Yeah. But it depends on how you want to do it. I want to know where they're going to be able to get the revenues, then? If it's not through some form of taxation?
In your opening, you said that, that pay, you would give up the pay that city council members receive. What is that annual pay?
In most cases, I do believe the pay is between $100 to $150 per meeting. They meet twice a month, so it's not a whole lot of money. Once again, I mean, you're looking at maybe $300 a month, multiply that by 12, you're not looking at a lot of money. But at the same time, I'm not doing it for the pay, I'm doing it because it's what's right.
The next question is, in our general questions that you answered, tax reform, you answered that, but at the tail end of your answer, so the people that'll be watching the video, could you explain, your last statement says, reduce all taxes, including CCO, GMO, INH, and SCO. Could you explain that and explain the full name of what, what those initials are?
Oh yeah, it's actually really easy. If you go to your appraisal district, those are all the taxes listed except for one given tax, and that's the hospital district. They are actually the lowest by far, and I do believe, if anything, we need to be supporting the hospital districts. They do a lot of hard work, and they're not asking a lot of money to do it. And in turn, the people, whenever you have any issues, I don't know if you've ridden in a hospital truck lately, if you call an ambulance, normally, on average, around the state, you can spend upwards of $750 per ride, and I don't care if that's two miles down the road. That's ridiculous. If people need help, I would personally rather bleed half to death and have someone give me a ride for 200 bucks than call an ambulance at that rate. I'm stingy, it is what it is, I'm not paying that kind of fee. But the rest of them, especially our schools right now, they're extremely top-heavy in administration, they continue to take out an increasingly high amount of bonds, and they continue to topple these, pay off the old bonds, and before they're even done, they're going to buy back a bunch of new bonds, granted, to help, try to help ease the interest that has to be paid, but then they're going to turn around and do what New Candy's trying to do right now, and sell another 200 million worth of bonds. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. You're robbing Peter to pay Paul at this point. A stop has to be put to it. You have to learn how to work within a budget, or you have to stop. You only got two options. Any normal business would close at that point.
Trying to call them bonds. The county is, the schools.
All of it is.
Yep. Okay, so in, I guess, under the general category, there was a question, where do you stand on the GRP? That's Groundwater Reduction Plan, contract, and why? You, you answered, the GRP was formed under misinformation. But to put it plainly, the group was created under fallacy and should be disbanded. So can you explain how and why the state did this?
I believe that was 26-some years ago, we had a big water scare. People thought we were going to be running out of water real quick in a hurry. In fact, it landed on our current city council member's hands, and I spoke with one in passing conversation about exactly what happened. The pretense was, they said, well, we're going to be out of water in 20 years, Texas is in a drought, we're going to have an issue. Well, they decided to change the conservation theory in it. Instead of drawing all this water directly out of the ground, let's use some land, let's use some water, let's kind of mitigate our uses. Well, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, rain falls, it goes to the aqua for replenishes wells. I mean, that's just common science. We don't have to be rocket scientists to figure this one out, we learned that in grade school. But, the biggest issue I have is that it was created with false information. The studies that they did were riddled with errors, riddled with misinformation, and highly inflated, kind of like the BP spill. We were told only X number of gallons was being dispersed, and in fact, that was the lowest of the estimate, and in turn, it was five times more than the estimate ever considered to be. We have too many issues with government making these studies that aren't being validated, that aren't being checked, that aren't being referenced. And in turn, it's forced the hands of the city. We agreed to this stupid nightmare that is called the SJRA, and now the people are having to suffer and deal with it. The government's not dealing with it, our representatives aren't dealing with it, and if anybody tells me they are, I'm going to say, then explain why they're still in power, explain why the monopoly still exists, and explain why my rates are as high as they are.
Can I tag on to that just for a second? What's the status of, of the City of Conroe and their litigation with SJRA?
Well, it'd be about a month ago, I do believe, at this point. The city had another city council meeting, and they decided to sue the SJRA again, because they went ahead and went to litigation, sat down an arbitration, came to an agreement. Two weeks after the agreement was struck, they defaulted on the agreement. So once again, we're going back to court. I'm not an attorney, most of this won't become open public record for all of us to see and hear about until either they agree to something, or it gets further through and we hear little trickle-down pieces here and there. If you really would want to know the status, the best person you can ask is the judge or the court clerk, but they're not going to say anything until the litigation's over legally, they can't.
I want to go back around, and then after hitting me, we'll get back on our routine.
I'm going to do some monitor advertising.
Bob, you ready?
Are you?
Yeah, we're going to, we'll go.
Did you just skip me?
Yeah, he just skipped you.
No, he said, come to this back.
No, no, skip, oh. I'm just going back that way.
It doesn't matter.
To hit me and then back around.
This is the worst game of monopoly.
Let's change. Let's just punish Larry, he's going to call that.
Well, I used up the time that he didn't use.
Okay.
No, there was five seconds.
You, you are self-employed, right?
Uh, yes.
So how much time are you going to have to dedicate to this job, and is that enough?
Oh, actually, yeah, it's not a problem. Me and my wife have already discussed this. She makes plenty of money by herself, so we're not hurting for cash. So I can actually quit doing pretty much everything. I can dedicate a small portion of my time continuing the bookkeeping and accounting services, because I enjoy helping the public. I mean, it's a great way to reach out to people and help them financially, because that's one of the people's greatest needs in this world. Other than that, chickens lay their own eggs. I don't really have to go out there and poke and prod them all the time, just go out there and change out some water. We've already started reducing the flock for my wind. That way, I, once again, have more time to go ahead and dedicate out. The construction company I do is primaries and power washing. That even, I've decided it's done. The guy that helped me, I said, here's the name, do whatever you want with it, I don't care anymore, it's yours. This way, he can get some money, he's a good kid, worked very hard, he deserves a leg up, he's had a hard life. But in turn, it's going to give me the time and dedication I need to do whatever I want. I can stay home, help raise my daughter, and I can dedicate all my time to continuing to study the issues that the city had.
So are you planning to go in, like, a day a week, or a couple hours most days, or what?
Oh, you don't know how I work. It's seven days a week, baby. We're going to work.
So you're going to go into the city office every day of the week?
I'll be there five days a week. The other two days, I'm going to be doing the same thing I always do, pull out the laptop and keep studying.
Okay. Good enough. You, you did, you did answer this on, this question, but I'd like a little clarification, because it just.
I believe Bob didn't answer it specifically.
Should salaried employees be paid overtime? And if so, should there be a limit on how much overtime they're paid? Now, you have firefighters, you have cops that are, are salaried employees, but they will, they may work shifts, and their shift may be a 48-hour shift, so they're automatically on, they're, they're already overtime right there. But, there's also emergencies that come up, that they're going to be spending more time out there. So, should they be paid, should those salaried personnel, whoever it is working for the city, be paid any overtime whatsoever, and, and so what case?
I'm going to tell you, primarily, no. Honestly, if we restructure and do what we should have done in the first place, they will be paid above average, and we wouldn't be having this conversation, because they'd be more than well compensated based upon the jobs they do and the time they put in. I believe a person should always be paid for the type of work they can do. If a man can give me twice the work, I gladly give him pay and a half and fire two people. That's my theory in it, at the end of the day. There should be some cases, such as natural disasters, where they should at least be able to get an incentive overtime. Maybe not a pay per hour, but come to terms with an effective pay that is actually going to assist them and their families and compensate them for the time they're away. I don't care if it's a hazard bonus, whatever you decide you want to title it or call it, but keep in mind, I'm a very frugal man. So we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars here. But if you paid them right in the first place, I think they'd be happy to do it regardless.
We're about halfway through right now.
Let me take more time.
In our questionnaire, one of the questions was, do you feel that the City of Conroe Police and Fire is adequately funded? And you said, no, despite being underfunded, both departments strive for perfection in their services. And then, on further down, you said, restructuring of top-heavy departments. Are you referring to those two departments, or are there sub-departments in each of those? You said you would overhaul, you would restructuring the top-heavy departments. Were there any other departments that were top-heavy, even though we were talking about the fire and the police?
Well, when we looked at it, we found that there was a couple departments that we discussed it as a ghost employee, so to speak, for the Montgomery County departments. Or you have someone who is a director of XYZ, but they really don't do anything, but they're getting paid $158,000 a year to do nothing besides sit there. Those people, I'm sorry, I don't care what your title is, you're getting paid based upon the work you do. Last time I checked, this is still government, these are still civil service jobs. If you don't like a pay reduction, feel free to leave, we'll find somebody else who will happily take a paycheck. I'm sure it will happen, I'm sure people would be pleased to apply and get a new job. That pays more than what they currently have. Once again, we do have ones that are silo effects. We see it all the time, especially in the permitting department. We have a handful of people that are screwing around like little mice, trying to get the jobs done, and then we've got other people just sitting there on their hands, not really doing much, but yet collecting a really nice hefty paycheck. And in some cases, we can ease some of these problems by hiring part-time people. We don't have to pay them health insurance, we don't have to pay them pensions, that saves us a lot of money on benefits, when a lot of your average benefits can equate anywhere between $20,000, up to $60,000 a year, depending on what position, once again, that you're in. But these can be restructured accordingly, we can reallocate the money to departments that are needed. And I know in a question that we're going to come up to soon enough, we'll discuss that a little more in depth, so I won't try to bore you too much.
So you have, Kate, more contract employees than full-time?
Not necessarily. If the position details and entails full-time employees, let's hire the full-time employee and get the job done, but I'm not going to just hire anybody. I'm going to hire the ones that are going to work.
Under the economy category, there's a question that says, do you feel cities should be in the real estate business, and to what extent, like renting abatements? Like an example, industrial technology park? You said, no. Government's primary function should be the safety of its citizens, providing schools, providing hospitals, and maintaining infrastructure. Should government really be in the business of providing schools and hospitals?
Well, yeah, that's part of infrastructure, that's part of what the state's supposed to be doing. You know, if we go back, let's say, to the original foundation of our constitution, we can wipe out more than half of our expenses immediately on our government, because the government was never designed nor created to do half of what it's doing. That's why it does everything uneffectively and inefficiently. At the end of the day, I don't believe that we should be getting involved in real estate. If somebody thinks their business is just Joe Cool smooth, put your money where your mouth is. Ask your citizens to buy here, pay here. The end of the day, if the company feels it's strong enough, and that we have a base that can actually buy, and they can make revenues, then they're going to move here. Why would you not want to be right where your clients are? Where would you not want to be close to where your clients are? I had a discussion with a certain gentleman, I won't name his name, about our fun-filled industrial plex over there. He said, well, you know, technology's hot. And I said, well, I did warehousing and distribution, and let me tell you what I wouldn't do. I wouldn't buy a big building, I wouldn't spend a bunch of money, and if I am, I'm going to pick a middle road, somewhere, not so much in Porter, but not so much in Conroe. I can build in Grangerland, I can do it for cheap, I can buy the land cheaper, I can still send my people where they need, and all I need is a warehouse. I don't need a gigantic building with beautiful, awesome offices, I don't need property taxes that are going to exceed by itself $30 million in value for appraisal. That's ridiculous. There's no time and no point in no industry where government should be dealing with it. That's why we have monopolies, that's why we have unfair advantages all across the board, that's why your electric bill costs what it costs.
I'll circle back on that, let's go.
Okay. Well, we've had a question on the funding for the firemen and the police, and here's one about Conroe city employees in general, are they adequately funded? And a lot of people, when you asked how they set their wages, they say, look at some other cities around here and see how they pay. But, but there are a lot of places, Montgomery County's one, the one that was in the news a long time ago, Bell, California, the councilman decided to give himself a million-dollar salary. So, you know, you can't just look at other, other areas. Who are you going to go to, if you're a city council and you need to review your, your pay scale, who are you going to go to to find out what a, what a good number is?
Well, once again, it comes down to, what kind of work are you going to do? If I can get twice the work out of one person, I'll happily give you a pay and a half versus someone.
You got one gardener making $20,000 and one gardener making $40,000?
Why not?
I think they'd object to that, especially one making $20,000.
Well, I object to lazy people taking a paycheck and not doing any work. Why should I pay you the same for doing nothing as the man over there busting his hump, dedicated to not only making our city better, but in turn, providing for his own family? Motivation is key.
As government employee, don't you have to have a, a pay scale that you can refer people to?
Well, you normally can, but nonetheless, we have a ceiling built in, and we have a floor. We can always increase those, there's nothing saying that we can't do what we want with that portion of it. So if someone's willing to put forth the productivity, I believe the man should be paid for his work.
You made a comment that you were going to hire people that will, that will work. I didn't think it was under the, the authority of the city council to be hiring and firing.
You're correct, it's actually not, but one of the big things we do is, we actually work closely with HR and see what they need, because at the end of the day, we say yes and no to the budgets, just the same as Montgomery County does.
But you don't hire or fire the individuals?
No, but at the end of the day, if it's a bloated budget and there's no productivity coming out of it, we can definitely.
I understand that, I'm not, I'm not wanting to ramble, I'm just wanting to know.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
You don't, you don't control.
No, there's no direct control.
Right. And so, the other thing that you brought up was, that there's department heads that are making $158,000 for the city. What department heads are those?
No, it's just figurative.
Well, you brought out $150,000, talking about reducing the cost, this goes back to Larry's question, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was trying to reduce the cost of, of salaries and, and, I don't remember whether it was.
Yeah, yeah, I remember the question quite well.
Where there was a budget, and you brought up, you know, we're paying $158,000. Well, if you're, and you can reduce the budget, because you're paying $158,000, I just want to know, who's getting $158,000? I just wanna know who's getting a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars so that you can reduce the budget?
No, that's an example. It's not any one person that's getting that kind of money, honestly. But there are certain department heads, especially like engineering, they get paid quite well. I wouldn't wanna do that to engineering personally. They do bust their hump to try to get everything taken care of in a timely fashion. But of the same problem, they're understaffed and overworked. They don't have the time nor the ability to go through everything they need. So, it needs to be reallocated to give the proper departments what they need to get things in and out and get it handled. And once again, part-time positions can handle that.
Okay. In spending, we had a question about, does the city administrator need a vehicle in our car allowance? You said, no. Along that same line, what about reimbursement for expenses incurred on behalf of the county? Obviously, they should be reimbursed or not?
Oh, they should, but the county should already have, or sorry, the city should already have those paid for. There shouldn't be, need to be reimbursement. We should already have the supplies that we absolutely need to have.
Yeah, I said county, but it's city.
No, no, it's okay. I know what you meant. We're all, we're all in this room. You stop arguing with about the county stuff, so.
Let me take my question.
Better find a new question, John. They'll ask a lot of them. I'm sure you've got one.
Okay, let's see. Back to providing schools and providing hospitals. Let's go to the hospitals. How many hospitals around here are government-run? Because you say government isn't.
It's, it's taxed. That's where the money's coming out of. It's not that we have anything that we can even directly do. Even the appraisal district itself, we're extremely limited. Now, one of the things we can do is lean on them, get our representatives together, including the city council members, go down there and get Austin to do something, because at the end of the day, they're the ones that have to do it all.
Do what?
It depends on what we wanna talk about.
We're talking about hospitals.
Well, I was using, I was using.
You brought up the city should have, the city should have a hospital.
You said the government's primary function should be the safety of its citizens, providing schools, providing hospitals, and maintaining infrastructure. I agree with.
Overall, government. Not, not city. The city doesn't do any of that. Well, sorry, they do some of that, but they don't do the hospitals now.
Well, they don't do the schools either.
Yeah, that's provided by the state. We already talked about that as well.
Uh, uh, we're just trying to clarify things, I think, because I don't understand when you said that cities should be providing the schools.
Oh, no, no. This is in regards to what government should be focused on and what they shouldn't be focused on.
So, where, why should city government or any government be focused on a hospital?
Our health or safety?
That's private enterprise.
Yeah, I know that's why we have entire, like, Walker County Hospital District. They, they handle all of that. They overview all the budgets, all the work, all the pay.
Okay.
Conroe.
Conroe has nothing.
Who are they, who are they owned by?
It's a large, large corporation.
Okay. All right, I'll just, that was a clarification question there.
Well, the city of Conroe is probably lucky that, that their dirty laundry doesn't get aired much because the county's got so much stuff going on. Now, one of the issues that keeps coming up is nepotism and who's uncle was working for whose brother and who's getting the next pay raise. So, what's your position on nepotism in general? And what, to what extent is Conroe suffering the same way that Montgomery County does?
Mostly, well, I guess the easiest way to say it is, I don't like nepotism because it harbors and favors laziness. Now, if you wanna hire your cousin to do a job, but the man's willing to work and he's willing to bust his hump and get the job done, I'm not gonna be upset by it. Personally, myself, I'm not gonna care that he's your kin or anybody else. If he's getting the job done and he's doing it for the right pay, I'm not gonna be offended nor upset. Now, if somebody else that's more qualified is applying for the same position and because he's your cousin, he got the job, that's not okay. And the most part, I really don't see too much of that in the city. I haven't found anything or anybody pointing one out just yet. And I've asked a lot of people what they know, and these people have been here for thirty, fifty years. And no one said, this is what's going on right now. Now, it's happened in the past, but those times have been gone.
Are you sending examples in the county?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Bob? Uh, so, since we've already brought up the county, you know, just bring up the county as far as ethics. There seems to be a, a big problem with lack, lack of ethics in our, in our county government and with, um, our commissioner's court's already been chastised for that, as well as profiting on the backs of taxpayers. Do you feel that these same things are taking place in the city of Conroe?
Yes.
Can you be?
The last city council meeting I went to, I basically, well, Duane Hamm thought I was attacking Nancy Mckeska, but apparently he wasn't listening very well. And I even decided to tell him that when he asked me, Mark, no, you just can't do that. And I was like, no, it's telling Mark Shorten, you're taking our paycheck. Now, you do your job. I'm tired of these old outdated ordinances, such as the, uh, ordinances for RVs, fifth-wheelers, or fifth-wheels. If it's on my property and my property is large enough, it's not encroaching into any easements or any right-of-ways, go away. Leave me alone. Leave the other citizens alone. If the citizen wants to park an eighteen-wheeler on his two acres of property, leave him alone. Let him do it. Don't try to pass an ordinance to tell him he can't. And then definitely don't tell him, well, you can't park it on your property in the city, but you can go pay Joe Blow right down the road who lives in the city, two hundred dollars a month to park it on his property. We seem to have a lot of issues in this city that are silly issues, and a lot of people wanna continue to pick up paychecks and not do their job. And it's really starting to aggravate me to the point, I'm just not gonna be nice about it. Some people think Mark's a nice guy. Some people think Mark's, well, not so nice. But I really don't care. I'm willing to call the pot and the kettle black because they are. And if somebody gets offended, I'm not gonna apologize about it. It needs to be said. It needs to be addressed, and it needs to be done now.
In our question, we're talking about budget and surplus and all that. And obviously, you said there was an operating deficit of twelve million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. Have, has the city ever had a zero-based budget?
They'll tell you they do, but I can tell you right now, they don't. I mean, it's pretty simple if you look at it. Nobody's ever sat down and said, okay, what do we really need? Because we have this department ordering this, this department ordering this, this department ordering this. Well, why aren't we ordering everything once a year? We've got huge rooms that are sitting vacant. We've got buildings that are open that can store these items. But yet, we keep buying a little here, little there, little here, little there. Any big, large business will tell you, first of all, you can buy in bulk. And it's the power of bulk that saves you money. Some businesses even completely overbuy ridiculously for the simple fact is they can make it so cheap, it's the same as not buying it anyways.
So, the purchasing department, have you looked at the purchasing department? Do they have a good program? Do they follow the program or?
For the people I talk to, for the most part, yes. They, they try to follow what they can as far as keeping everything's ordered. They try to work by the budget they're given every year. But the problem we continue to have is, we need more, we need more, we need more. But yet, what I keep seeing is more and more people trying to do without and more and more doing it inefficiently. Once again, government has gotten too big. They're doing too much. They're not efficient when they're large. They never have been and never will be.
You've mentioned, and I don't know if you addressed this a second ago, about transparency and accountability to the public. And what measures you propose to improve those? And you said, open meetings without closed-door sessions. I mean, is that happening now? Can you explain?
Pretty much every couple of meetings, everybody goes into executive session and they hide behind the door. I understand sometimes, you know, you wanna talk and say, like, uh, recently with the three-eighty agreement with a company that wants to come out here. They did it all behind closed doors because they were afraid somebody like Montgomery would come in and say, well, hey, I'll just give you a better deal. I'll just give you an abatement altogether. And then you don't have to stick to a contract. You don't actually have to do your job, and you can just have the tax abatement. Whereas the three-eighties, a structured contract that holds them accountable to perform like they're supposed to perform. I keep seeing it more and more. The more I look at it, the more I dislike it. It needs to be fixed. It needs to be corrected. It needs to be done now.
Okay. Dennis, we've got about five minutes or so. Maybe enough time to go around the table?
You know, a few years ago, we looked at some of the ISVs and we found out that the school districts, uh, some of them had a hundred million dollars stashed away. And I think Montgomery County has like three hundred million dollars stashed away. So, looking at this, where you wrote about the, the budget, this fund balance of sixty-one million, is that the money that they have set aside? Is that all the money they have set aside, essentially, savings account or slush fund?
I need to go back and look at the actual budget. I don't have it on me right now. I apologize. I came flying in from work trying to beat a timeframe. Let me see it.
But, but that is. That is the money they have in a bank that's probably drawing interest somewhere.
Revenue budget, a hundred and sixty-one.
It sounded like you said they're operating at a deficit right now, but it's gonna be covered by that fund?
Yes, uh, normally, that's a, a balance that's gonna be left open. A lot of expenditures can come in and out of that, emergencies, things like that. I don't like sitting on the money. If I'm gonna sit on the money, I want it to generate money. Would you rather sit on money for a year in a savings account or in a bank account? Everybody's gonna say, I want it in a savings account. Despite the low yield, I'm getting money for my money. I believe we can use things like this, taking this money on years that we would normally have, a profit instead of a deficit like this last year. We can take this money, give twenty-five percent to the fire department, twenty-five percent over to the, uh, police department. They can be properly funded, do what they need to do. We can take fifty percent of the money, stick it aside, invest it wisely, even if we just do it in bonds. We can then take that money and give it back as a tax incentive or a tax break to the businesses and to the people.
Is there any state law or maybe national law that says that a city has to keep certain amount of money sitting around for emergencies?
Uh, it's not, I don't know. I call my wife. She'll tell you.
Ask her what that business could be.
That, that's her job, not mine.
What's her job?
She's a governmental auditor. So, that's her job. I'll make her work for free, too.
So, um, a lot of the cities, Conroe included, belong to municipal leagues or the municipal league. They do a lot of training. They do a lot of indoctrination and, and, um, things with new city council members and mayors. One of the things that the municipal leagues push is Agenda Twenty-One. It's been pushed in, um, Conroe. I know they've gotten grants before and, um, under the auspices of Agenda Twenty-One. What do you know about Agenda Twenty-One? And would you be willing to take grants if it had requirements in there that went along with Agenda Twenty-One?
I'd like to say no to the last portion of yours right off the bat. Uh, I don't like it. From my readings and understandings of Agenda Twenty-One, it's one giant land snatch. It's push people into highly populated areas. That way, the government can retake the lands and they can do their bidding with it. I know one of the biggest pushes, and you would see that, uh, very closely in New Orleans. They decided, well, we keep flooding, we keep flooding. Well, we want people to go out of New Orleans altogether. The hurricane finally came. Katrina hit. A lot of people fled New Orleans and just never went back. They built a giant seawall all around New Orleans and tried to keep it from flooding. What they really did was push the water over the, uh, company cities like La Plaize and flooded out a city that's never flooded in over fifty years. Now, those people are having to move further inland. To me, it's just a giant land snatch organization and, once again, just take control of the people. Whether you want it or not, you're gonna leave this land. It might as well just be the same thing as forced annexation, as far as I'm concerned.
I'll give my.
Go, Chairman, go.
Build it and they will come.
That resonates, don't it?
Yeah, eighty million dollars worth of performing arts theater. How's that sound for Conroe? You buying that?
Well, when, when I first heard it and I wrote it down, I wrote down eight million, which wasn't so bad at first. You know, I wasn't willing to have a, that big of a stroke. Even whenever I responded to it in the thing, I said, you know, eight million makes me wanna have a stroke. Eighty million makes me wanna drop dead. That is way too much money to be spending in one shot. I, I love what the performance arts does. I, I do. I, I like that they try to bring understanding and knowledge to the community about art and how it works and all the inner workings and what goes on. I have a lot better plans with eighty million dollars. A lot better plans.
All right. Well, I guess that concludes our, uh, table of questions. If you'd like to spin up the final list to close, you're welcome to do it. Or we can ask more questions.
I can ask whatever you want. I'm open, but if anyone calls me or asks me, I'm open.
Y'all done? If you wanna go ahead and close if you like.
Well, first, I wanna ask a question because I got five minutes, so I got plenty of time. What do y'all see? Yeah, yeah, you don't thought you were getting out of this. Each one of you got thirty seconds to answer the question. Where do you see the city in five years as far as economic growth?
City of Conroe?
Yep.
I think that's, um, that's up to the city council and how they can make the city of Conroe attractive to outside people without an investment being necessary, like an abatement. Because it is the fastest-growing county probably in the country. And they're all feeding off of Houston. And I think there's plenty up there to see, uh, for people and companies to be attracted to. Uh, and to, to satisfy that growth. Was that thirty seconds?
Need a little more. It's okay. Who wants next?
Well, it's often to continue to grow because people wanna get out of Houston. At some point, though, we're gonna be Houston. And they're gonna have to move somewhere else. It's probably not five years from now, but somewhere not the too distant future that'll happen. It'll be Sharrow, Texas.
Mr. Bab?
It's gonna continue to grow. I mean, we're seeing new homes, um, coming up in, in, in the city of Conroe itself. But, and new businesses are gonna continue to come in. Um, and the growth can continue and the city can continue to prosper financially without, um, annexing outline areas and bringing them into the city. And if it, if, if the growth dies off, then they'll continue to do what Houston does. And then that's annexing more outline areas within their DJ. Whether they, whether the people want it or not, um, to continue on to be able to have the growth.
Ms. T. O.'s?
Let's say, look at Conroe, how it was going to grow, or to look at its past. How did it grow in the last thirty years? It only grew on the outside edges. Because Conroe itself looks basically the same as.
We're landlocked.
Yeah. So, unless new thoughts and new technology, open minds get in and go, how can we make a better plan? Then I don't, I don't, um, I look for more of the same, the way it is, just growing on the edges and not actually.
Real growth.
Real growth.
All right, I only have a minute forty-five. I'd love to let you speak, but I'm gonna go ahead and wrap it up. All right, I only have a minute forty-five, I'd love to let you speak, but I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up for you guys. I know I'm not the smartest man in the world. You know, I may walk around like a dandy rooster with my chest all puffed out, strutting around. But at the end of the day, I know my limitations. But the one thing I do know is that what I lack, I know the people that do know. I can ask them the questions, they're willing to participate, they're willing to put in the time and the effort. These include engineers, accountants, pretty much anything else you want for organizational development up to businesses. These people are willing to do it because they love this city. We've grown so disattached and disassociated with our citizens, you couldn't ask them to do anything, it's become a fight. That's why we have to pass ordinances to get something changed. I believe if the city starts working with the people again and showing them that, hey, you're the reason why we grow, you're actually the reason that bring people here and you're one of the biggest parts of this city, I believe we can be successful. But to touch on the fastest growth before I run out of time, did you know in that calculation, they actually use the forced annexation as well to calculate the growth? It's not real growth. That's cannibalism. And I'm pretty much out of time.
Is that what they've done already or what they are going to do to try?
What they're going to continue to do, until it's put a stop to. Other than that, vote Mark Frank.
Please.
There you go.